Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clip. Call the roll, please, so that we might establish a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Ashby is expected momentarily. Councilmember Laloe is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Shenir?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Laloe, are you present? He wasn't. Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela, would you please give us the honor of the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance leading us today?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you for the honor. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisamon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwinwin Tum peoples, and the people of the Wiltinranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now please salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Members of the public, good afternoon, and to our city staff, thank you. We are in the middle of budget season. And today and tonight, we will dive into various departmental budgets and break it down as we lead to a June vote on the budget itself. So we begin this afternoon with first with a public hearing on the citywide fee schedule updates, and then we'll talk about the capital improvement program, the budget for the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment, otherwise known as YIPSY, and then we'll hear from our Measure U Community Advisory Committee regarding their recommendations for the budget. And so why don't we begin, please, with item one?
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. My name is Jason Bader with the Finance Department. The item before you is the annual citywide fee schedule update. The citywide fees and charges policy sets the guidelines to determine cost recovery levels and establishes a process to add, modify, and delete fees and charges. All fees included in this report qualify as exceptions to Proposition 26, which prohibits the city from increasing taxes but defining them as fees. Staff is recommending adding thirty-two new fees, modifying three hundred nine fees, and deleting four fees for a total of three hundred forty-five changes affecting seven departments. The associated revenue adjustments are necessary to provide appropriate cost recovery related to city programs and services, and these increases are included as part of the proposed FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget. A couple of highlights from the report. The fire prevention program fee increases are offsetting the cost of the senior staff assistant in the Fire Prevention Division as part of the proposed budget, and the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department is proposing fee changes in additions to create additional fee structure for the North Natomas Community Center Aquatics Complex. Also, to address Councilmember Gera's questions during the Budget Audit Committee meeting on May sixth regarding community center fees, supplemental budget information, item number five, has been included in the Capital Improvement Program Supplemental Material Packet Day. This is item number two on the afternoon agenda. On May sixth, the Budget Audit Committee reviewed and met recommended approval of all fees included in the report. Staff is recommending the city council pass a resolution approving citywide fee and charge adjustments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So the net change is about $450,000 in terms of additional fee amounts cumulatively across an entire city, so that's pretty status quo. All right. Is there public testimony on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Show one hand raised to make public comment on this item. Shira Lane?
Hi. Sorry, I meant to do one that's not on the agenda, so I can wait.
Thanks, Shira. Okay, members, are there questions? I see Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just move adoption of the resolution for the fee change schedule.
Yes, okay. Very good. It's been moved. Is there a second? I see Mayor Protem Gera. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, and I was just gonna ask staff if they could talk a little bit about, you know, just the challenges here. I know they provided an addendum here on fee structures and fee services. I know some of the challenges we've had, you know, pre-pandemic and now as we're coming forward out of the out, and there may be opportunities where some of our seniors are looking for opportunities to meet. You know, I wanna, I wanna see if we can get a little forward thinking about the fee structure, particularly for our parks areas. I know we have the Hart Senior Center where we have activity going, but I know throughout the entire city, there, our community centers have been our places for seniors to congregate. So maybe if staff could talk a little bit about that and any thoughts. You know, again, we're still kind of in a, in a, in a point where we can plan, maybe, and have a further discussion in the form. Staff can talk a little bit about that, the fee structure?
Yeah, we do have Mario and park staff on the call as well. Could somebody answer councilmember's question?
Hi, Councilmember Gera. Mario Lara, the Director of Youth Parks Community Enrichment Department. We did submit the SBI supplemental response to the questions that was raised regarding fees for senior programs. We do offer a wide range of free programs and services to our seniors, not just at the Hart Senior Center, but throughout our community centers as well. There are many programs that are just free and available to our seniors. And yes, you are correct, coming out of the COVID, we are seeing an increase in participation rates. In-person participations in particular are at a rise, and so we're very cognizant of that and definitely want to make sure that those opportunities remain available to our seniors. Low-cost programs we do offer as well for, as we, as we're resuming programs, there are various opportunities where, for example, the Heart Fund Pass program is available where they can get $100 towards, you know, applying towards any of the programs that do have a low fee associated with them. Trips and tours are provided through vendors. Again, we try to negotiate and try to work with those to make sure that they are affordable. And that Heart Fund Pass, by the way, applies to any senior program across the city, not just at the Hart Senior Center. I, you know, I hope this responds to some of the concerns. We do have a fee waiver program as well for facility usage. You know, for any entity out there, nonprofit organization that is looking to serve seniors, that wants to partner with us and is looking for space, low-cost space that's available, we can partner with them as well to do those kinds of programs and services. So plenty of opportunity, and we're gonna continue to be mindful of that and continue to make sure that our programs are very much accessible.
Thank you, Mario, and I do appreciate all your staff and the work that they've gone out to do. I know that the pandemic was extremely difficult for seniors who were isolated, and there may be opportunities to help, you know, moving forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll second the item here on the fee structure, and I want to thank the YIPSY staff for all their work in making sure that we create accessibility here for our seniors.
Okay, thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded. Let us call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby is absent. Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenir?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes. I guess it's eight to seven or nothing. Let us move now to the next item, which is the CIP program. We did have some discussion about this some length last week, but let's see if we can break it down in the context of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Who's presenting on this? Mr. Tamayo?
Yes, Mayor, I'm presenting.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Michael Tamayo with the Finance Department. The item before you is the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven Proposed Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP. The CIP is the city's five-year financial plan for funding infrastructure and facility needs citywide in the areas of general government, public safety, convention, culture, and leisure, parks and recreation, transportation, and city utilities. This proposed CIP was reviewed by the Planning and Design Commission on May twelve and was found to be consistent with the twenty-thirty-five general plan. The five-year CIP totals $420.5 million, including $70.9 million from the general and Measure U funds. Of that $420.5 million, $120.8 million is allocated for the upcoming fiscal year, FY twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, including $18.1 million from the general and Measure U funds. Some of the major projects and programs in the FY twenty-three CIP include the following. The City Facility Reinvestment Program, which funds improvements such as roof replacements, HVAC improvements, and other deferred maintenance needs at various city buildings. The Advanced Life Support Equipment Program, which provides funding for the purchase of ALS equipment such as ambulances, defibrillators, and gurneys. The Convention Center Production Equipment Upgrades Program for replacing equipment such as lighting, sound, and stagecraft equipment at the Safe Credit Union Convention and Performing Arts District. The Blackbird Park Phase Two Project, which will construct two footsaw courts and provide fencing around the baseball fields at the park. The Transportation Corridor Program, which will improve pavement conditions and mobility options citywide, and the Water Plus Program, which will design plans and specifications for the development of necessary water supply expansion improvements, which will be needed due to expected growth. A full list of projects in the CIP can be found in the Proposed CIP documents, which is available on the city's website. Additionally, there is a change to the proposed CIP we would like to address here. Due to a timing issue between when the Storm Drainage Property Fee ballot measure was certified and when the proposed budget had to be released, the CIP document currently does not include projects and programs which will be funded by the new Storm Drainage Property Fee Fund. Staff will be incorporating these changes into the approved CIP documents. The changes are summarized in the chart shown here and the amount to approximately $11 million in additional funding for storm drainage programming. The next steps for the proposed CIP include a review by the Budget and Audit Committee on May thirty-first and by the full city council on June fourteenth. Lastly, I'd like to thank department staff citywide for their support in helping the Finance Department put together this proposed CIP. That concludes my presentation, and I and department staff are available to answer any questions.
All right. Is there public testimony on the capital improvement budget?
Mayor, I show no hand raised to make public comment on this item.
All right, members, this is a discussion item. Do we need, we don't need a motion, do we, here?
You do not. This is receive and consider for final budget adoption.
All right. I think it's pretty basic here.
Mr. Mayor, my, maybe, Madam Quirk, my understanding is that this is coming to budget and audit?
Just coming to budget and audit. Why would it come to budget?
Because you mentioned, Madam Quirk, you mentioned that this is a consideration next to our final budget adoption. But my understanding is CIP is coming back to budget and audit. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Why?
Okay, okay, thank you. Just wanted to, want to clarify.
Maybe, maybe you can review, just for the public here, exactly what our process is going forward. Or all, all of the entire final budget will come before budget and audit, before it goes to the full city council. Is that, is that?
This is Emily Combs, I'm the Finance Director. Mayor, if I may, answer that question. Walk through the budget schedule. So today, you heard our capital improvement program and fees and charges will be reviewing YIPSY department budget in more detail, and then this evening at 5:00 PM, we'll be reviewing the fire department budget as well as the police department budget in more detail. And then on May thirty-first, the Budget and Audit Committee will again hear the entire budget for budget option for consideration to move forward to the city council for final adoption, hopefully on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Yep, that's exactly what I thought. Okay, so it's all gonna make one more pass through the Budget and Audit Committee. Very good. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item, then. We get to a very important budget in part of our city, and that is the proposed budget for the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Mario Lara, Director of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department, or YIPSY for short. The item before you is the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department's Fiscal Year 2022, 23 Proposed Budget. I will also be providing highlights of YIPSY's youth summer programs and opportunities. In accordance with the city charter, YIPSY staff presented the proposed budget to both the Parks and Community Enrichment Commission and the Sacramento Youth Commission in March. I would like to thank them for their unanimous support for YIPSY's proposed budget. Finally, I would like to thank YIPSY staff for their work in putting this proposed budget together in collaboration with the Finance Department and the city's management team. The proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is $57.8 million, and it funds 716.63 FTEs in our department. This chart gives you a bit of historical context and comparison with the current funding levels. Basically, it's our proposed budget supports delivery of the broad range of service, services at current service levels.
Mr. Lara, I'm sorry, I think, before you go further, because it's really important here, can you go back? And that is, we jumped from thirty-four million to fifty-seven million approximately, and last week, I forget which budget we were talking about, there was some Measure U.
Correct.
Sort of a accounting way that we did this. Are you saying that the youth budgets, youth budgets have an increase from thirty-four million to fifty-seven million in actual green dollars, has it?
That is correct, Mayor. In the past, previously, we had Measure U and Measure D accounted for a little bit differently. But starting in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, where you see this bar here when we approved that budget, we did that, a reporting adjustment. So if you compare our proposed budget here, the last, the last bar chart, with our current twenty-one, twenty-two funding levels, you'll see it's, it's pretty much the same service levels. The actual spending that you, that, that, that is out here was when we, we had Measure U accounted for a little bit differently, and it skews it a little bit there.
Right, but the, the only thing I care about is not the detail of the accounting, but how much actual money?
So.
So we're spending on youth versus then versus now.
Yeah, so the current, the proposed budget spends 57.8 million. The current budget is 56.5.
Mayor, if you go back. I added up. I think the prior years, it was closer to forty-five and forty-two million for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty when you added in the Measure U money to give you.
That's, that's what I want to know, whether you add the Measure. I'm just looking for apples to apples.
And that's, that's Youth Parks and Community Enrichment.
This is the entire department's budget, correct.
So if you really want to know what we're spending on youth, you'd have to break that out.
So do you have that analysis, Councilmember Shenir? I hear you're interested in the subject.
Just once or twice. There's lots of ways to count it. I don't have a number on me here. Depending on who you talk to, it's somewhere between one and seven percent of our general fund.
I mean, I have the numbers here, Mayor, in twenty, unless I added it wrong, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty actuals, it was forty-five million, just over, when you added everything together with offset, and which is where Measure U was before, and in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it was about forty-two point nine million dollars. So that shows you.
Okay, that's an increase, but it's like from forty-two to fifty-seven or something, I think is what it.
Okay, so again, this 57.8 million dollars is the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department's budget, not the city's youth.
I understand. Thank you. Okay, keep going. Sorry to get you off.
So, so here, here, and again, the operation of the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment touches on a number of major quality of life issues across the city, including youth development programs and services, and safe spaces for young people to thrive, building community. It also touches on the impacts of homelessness as well as ways to address climate change, as I'll review as we go along. And here, this, this chart simply illustrates the four core functional areas through which we deliver those programs and services. The first area, six percent of our budget is allocated for our admin team and our, our safety team. Less than a dozen park rangers provide education and enforcement across the city, enforcing city codes within our parks that over 234 developed parks. They respond to approximately 330 calls per month. They coordinate outreach for homeless population that are impacting our parks. They provide security at events and city events and permanent events across the city. In addition, this unit homes is home to our lean administrative unit that does all of the fiscal monitoring, making sure that, applying with all of the policies regarding procurement, human resources, grant leases, and, and support for the commissions as well. So here we get to the Youth Division, which are the core programs and services geared towards youth. Last week, the council received a presentation from the big three. YIPSY is one of those big three, and I'm pleased to, to, to confirm that the proposed budget that I'm presenting here does preserve the service levels that were reviewed during that presentation at pre-COVID service levels. And again, we anticipate that in-person attendance is continuing to increase as we get further and further away from the, from the, from the pandemic. The Youth Division represents fifteen percent of the department's operating budget with 234.2 FTEs funded. I will note here that over $1 million of these funds go directly to young people annually in the form of salary and stipends. These programs are designed to prepare young people for the workforce, give them their first job experience in many instances, as well as help them to develop confidence and build character in a safe space. Our Community Enrichment Division is about forty, forty-two percent of our budget, and many of the programs and services offered through YIPSY's Community Enrichment Division are also directed towards young people. Many programs offered at community centers and that you see on this slide, I won't read them all, are free to participants. And it includes, a lot of it is geared towards youth, but it also includes seniors and members, individuals with disabilities. YIPSY also partners with a number of outside agencies and community groups through contract classes, through rentals. I mentioned that nonprofit agencies that are offering free programs and services that benefit the community are able to receive fee waivers, and we process many of those. We permit special events that benefit the community. Sports leagues, for example, benefit from field permit, which is issued through this, through this arm of the department. Where there are fees, they are very low, and there are many scholarship opportunities for folks to access programs for free. The Parks Maintenance and Planning Division is allocated roughly thirty-nine percent of the proposed budget, and it funds 150.8 FTEs. Here, we have crews that conduct mainly daily maintenance activities, such as picking up trash, cleaning restrooms. We have several public restrooms within our park system, picnic shelters, landscape upkeep, et cetera, at over 216 developed park and over 3,280 acres of developed parkland. These crews, some of these crews are also responsible for weed abatement and fire mitigation in natural open areas and spaces that include sensitive habitat areas. We also pick up the trash and do landscape maintenance along bike trails, and we maintain the Sacramento's Historic Cemetery. The planning unit in, in this division is responsible for executing CIP projects. Currently, they're managing over seventy-four active CIP projects valued at over $30 million. A significant portion of those CIP funds also go towards maintaining and adding amenities that are actively used by young people in our community. Just yesterday, we did a ribbon cutting for a, for a new footsaw court amenity at Tanzania Park. With support from council, I will also add that we have been diligently addressing the deferred maintenance burden and backlog, and recently, this unit completed over $5 million in deferred maintenance projects. This will continue to be an area of focus, using surplus funds remaining at the end of the fiscal year per council resolution. The proposed budget does include a few cost-neutral changes. Basically, it's to consolidate a number of seasonal and part-time positions that we were having difficulty recruiting and keeping filled. We've consolidated some of those into higher-level positions, and we've added two park maintenance worker positions, a park maintenance worker two and a park maintenance worker three, to focus on community gardens, which we've, which have grown over the years, and to do some more playground inspections and maintenance. So the objectives of the fiscal year 2022, 23 are to continue with the broad range of programs and services. We've added a brand-new North Natomas Aquatics Complex and Community Center. We're extending our, expanding our pool season. We've also heated Clooney, so we'll, both of those locations will have a ten-month aquatic or swim season. We will complete the Park Master Plan Update, which is a work in progress. We will continue to focus on deferred maintenance, as I've indicated. We will continue to work with school districts to implement additional joint use agreements to add park spaces to residents, especially in park deficient areas. And all of this, we will continue to collaborate with public utilities and, and Public Works Department to implement ways to reduce water usage by upgrading irrigation systems and reducing our carbon footprint by removing turf in areas where they are necessary and planting additional trees. Our department currently maintains an urban forest of over 25,000 trees. So now I'd like to highlight some of the summer youth programs. This came up last week, and I, and I think it's a, it's a very much of interest for, for residents as well as for the council. YIPSY works in collaboration with various partners, police, fire, library, economic development, CBOs, three school districts, and we are diligently working to expand opportunities for youth, including a variety of childcare services, enrichment programs, after-school programs, workforce development programs at community centers, school sites, pools across the city. You see some of the examples listed here with flyers as such. I will also make note, make note that forty percent of YIPSY's active employees today are under the age of twenty-four, are young people. Forty percent of our active employees are under the age of people. We, we have employed over 300 young people in fifteen different job classifications. We hire young people to serve young people. Many of our programs are free and low-cost programs, and again, they're highlighted here on the slide. I would encourage residents who are interested in these programs to find out more by either visiting our website, visiting our community centers, and speaking with our staff to help them get registered so that they can get notifications and opportunities that are available. Here are just some additional examples of the programs that we provide that you are, I'm sure, very familiar with. We anticipate, by the way, onboarding at least 200 more seasonal employees over the summer, both to work in these programs and to be participants in these programs. Just another couple of slides before I end the presentation, examples of some of the, some of the opportunities for young people out there. We are actively recruiting crew leaders. Crew leaders do need to be 21 years of age with a driver's license. However, a lot of the folks that they will be supervising are youth aides who are middle school and high school age young people and who want to gain job skills, develop character, and earn some summer money while doing so. And then, lastly, because we added the North Natomas Aquatics Complex, we are hiring way more lifeguards than we, than, than, than we typically do. We have certified over 158 lifeguards already this year. We are going to continue to run those programs during the summer. We've hired several, a majority of the folks that we certify, we've hired, but we, we also tend to, to provide opportunities for folks regionally who attend our lifeguard certification course. I hope that gives a good sense of the summer programming lineup that we have to offer. Thank you for your continued support, Mayor and Council. The Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department has received Awards of Excellence two years in a row from the California Parks and Recreation Society. The budget will continue to support a high level of quality programs and services. level of quality programs and services for the community. You have a dedicated and motivated team of professionals in the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department. I thank them for their dedication. My staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Outstanding presentation and outstanding efforts, very committed, very committed team that you have, Mr. Wada, you know, and it's and these are passion, these are passion professions, right? Loving to serve young people in these ways. So, thank you. The question is always, is is it enough? Can we do more? Can we afford to do more? And that's what we want to discuss over the days, weeks, and and months ahead. Do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, I have one hand raised to make public comment in this item. That's Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis.
Yes, I I would like to say, and I'll use the acronym for time, Yipsey. I would like to see Yipsey get Grant High School's pool open this summer. I mean, as I have relocated back home, I just can't believe that pool is not open in the summer. It it used to be a centerpiece when we were growing up, and before I was born, that that pool was well-known as a community gathering spot, so that should be open. Also, I believe Yipsey, I I did my homework, Mayor and Mr. LaLolli. The Grant High School Drum Line needed sixty thousand dollars to travel, lodging, and food to DC. They're going to be in DC next month, and they've raised thirty. I don't see why Yipsey or Measure You or someone couldn't cut that other thirty to that drum line. They're nationally recognized. They're not just going to represent Sacramento. They're nationally recognized. So I'd like to see that in a sincere manner regarding Del Paso Heights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I can I just make a quick response to Mr. Davis's call, so he doesn't come up again tonight?
Sure, go ahead.
So I just wanted to let Mr. Davis know that both the Drum Line, the basketball teams, the men's and the women's basketball team, have have received a gratitude from me directly. And the reason I don't talk about it is because I am, I like to help. I don't look for a photo op or a pat on the back, but if Mr. Davis could simply reach out to Mr. V and the head coach of both basketball teams, so they can inform him of things that have taken place months and months and months ago, so he can be informed. So hopefully, this topic doesn't continue to be brought up during the council meetings. And I really appreciate Mr. Davis for really talking greatly about these programs, but the effort and the help has 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 been done, and it will continue being. The commitment will be continued on, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember LaLoli. All right, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Mario, you know, thank you for running a great Parks Department. You know, our park system is certainly near and dear to me and has been for many, many years. And for that reason, I asked this question. What is our current unfunded maintenance issue with the Parks Department? When last you reported, it was around a hundred and thirty million dollars of deferred maintenance requirements. Where are we at now?
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. So the figure, I I talked about completion of five million dollars in deferred maintenance pro- programs since that report. However, we're working off some documents that are dated, and I would like an opportunity to update those documents, and we know that because of inflation, the estimates that we have in those documents are perhaps off, but we're still working with that approximate figure of about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty million dollars in deferred maintenance projects, and this includes facilities, you know, all of our community centers and our facilities, our pools, and and as well as our parks, you know, hardscapes and spaces. So all of that combined is the burden that that we that we have, you know, in in mind, which is the range of about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty million dollars in deferred maintenance. So it, while we've 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 achieved some things by thank you for the support, council resolution identifying a mechanism through which we can use the surplus funds at the end of the year to dedicate that into a deferred maintenance account, and we have been chipping away at it. It, you know, the figure remains just about the same, Councilmember, and I and I know that might not be a satisfactory response, but it is accurate.
I'm wondering what it would take for you to update the numbers and get an accurate picture of where you're at. Other issues that have come up.
Mario, let me jump in here for a second. Councilmember Harris, this item is on the follow-up log, and we are planning to come back to the council of this as a stopgap. We're going to be sending out a memo in the next week or so, updating not only this number for the backlog, but also in Public Works, Utilities, all the projects that deferred maintenance, so you can have a more holistic look at what that is citywide. But yeah, the number has grown, for sure. It's not gone down. So it'll be a two-step process. We'll send the memo as an update, and then on the follow-up blog, we will come back with a presentation. I forget which council member asked for it, but we will bring it forward.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Geta.
Thank you. Mario, and thank you again, you know, your your team has been doing amazing work. They've been out there creating space and activities, you know, when outdoor recreation was the only thing that could be done out there, and so I again, I want to thank all of your your team and everyone involved in Yipsey, who's been able to to be out there to to provide a great service. I I want to bring up two issues here that are specific to District Six, but probably throughout the entire city. In in some of our built-out council districts, you know, there there isn't any real opportunity sometimes for open space. You know, in the in the new growth areas, you can plan out new parks, regional parks, Aquatics Center is a good example of that. But when, in some of our other areas, it becomes challenging. I I want to thank you for working with Councilmember Vang. I was there to see that great joint opportunity with the school district that's using the Anthony and seeing how we were able to create open space and new parks there by working with the school district. So that so therein lies the challenge with with areas that that are already built up. They tend to be older, too, so I I saw in the staff report that they're, you know, requesting to move deferred maintenance dollars, and and that's good. I think it's positive. We need to support deferred maintenance dollars to address that issue. But I'll bring up one specific area, which is the open space next to Okie Park. And this is a space that was transferred to the Parks Department. It's been a parkway for a long time, but it's been a vacant area that's undeveloped, all underneath power lines. And, you know, for a long time, created a lot of fires. There's a lot of illegal dumping happening there adjacent to people's wood fences, and so so in about five years ago, six years ago, the Parks Department started paying fifty to sixty thousand a year, I think, on contract to to mow and till and bring a tractor out there and till the area just to make sure that we don't create fires. So I did, I bring this up in this item, not the previous CIP dollars, because I do think that when we're thinking about our long-term budget, that's an ongoing expense that we have, that 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 operational expense. But there is an opportunity, I think, that if we invested in some of the capital improvement, one-time capital improvement, to put in the appropriate irrigation and electrical, and then we could lease that to someone else to manage the that land. I know there's right now Next Gen and NorCal Resist and a bunch of other community members want to look at that space as an urban farm, urban educational space. I do think that, and I'd like to have conversations about how maybe if we look at a higher one-time money for for capital might alleviate our ongoing expenses every year for tilling and just maintaining the land. And having grown up, you know, in agriculture, tilling land and not doing anything with it seems like, you know, you know, a waste of energy, time, and money. So I do want to thank your staff for helping out with that, but so so I want to put that on the table for Mr. City Manager and Mario about let's, we should think about this, that over, we're going to be tilling this land for years to come, maybe investing in the water and electrical needed to use the space more might save us in the long run. And then the last piece is much, much more minor. You know, there was a commitment by the city over almost now ten years ago to use a retention basin, a water retention basin as a a park and a soccer field, Maypong Park. And it was, obviously, it's a retention basin. It wasn't built or dug out to be a soccer field, but there was a commitment to the to the people in the community that we would approve that area and make it into a soccer field that was for pickup games, not necessarily for leagues. There's about a sixteen thousand dollar, very minor compared to the overall budget gap in in fulfilling that commitment to the community. So I'd like to see if we can at least, you know, one, end that commitment. Again, retention basin, or being creative about creating open space in areas where there are no parks nearby. So, you know, with that, Mr. City Manager and Mario, I'd like to at least, you know, work with the staff to figure out how these one-time issues, you know, fulfill a commitment, and then think about how to best use our 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 funds in the long run. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's that's all I have on this side. Oh, and thanks again, Mario, for your maintenance staff for fixing some of the vandalism over at the George Simp Community Center Little League fields. They were, the backstops were busted, and getting those repaired would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep my comments short. First, I just wanted to say, Mario, thank you so much for your heart and your hustle and your leadership in the Yipsey Department. I really appreciate the presentation, the thorough presentation. I had a similar question to Councilmember Harris, and I wanted to ask, like, what is the number on the deferred maintenance? I think you just shared a hundred and twenty, but you're going to go back and update those numbers, so would really love to learn that. And I also wanted to know of that five million, what percentage of that is the chip away from the bigger budget, but it sounds like staff's going to come back on that. I just want to say, you know, our youth and park system is really, for me, the heart of our city services. And when we talk about going back to basic, even though we're a modern city and we're taking on new things, this is, this department does the basic, it does the health piece, right? Everything to uplift our seniors and our youth, and so, you know, just really want to thank you for your leadership and our hundreds of staff that works every day to make sure that we can provide critical services. This is something, Mayor, that I may bring up in the budget and audit, but, you know, just curious and wanted to make the ask. I did hear a little bit that there is a a system in place where if there's surplus funds, then we could use it for these deferred maintenance. But I love to explore a policy, maybe a policy that we can implement during mid-year budget, where we set aside a certain percentage of surplus just for deferred maintenance in our Parks Department. I think that's going to be really important, and we can prioritize that percentage based on safety neighborhoods where our most vulnerable communities are located, where there's no parks, similar to what Councilmember Gera mentioned, and I also think this could be a great opportunity to begin using our racial equity tool, perhaps on this, to really begin to be laser-focused of how we spend our funding. And so, Mayor, I just wanted to put that, bring that forth to the full council, to just put a plug on that, but something that I will be bringing to the budget and audit as well. And I think that we can begin to kind of chip away a little bit on deferred maintenance, but prioritizing those deferred maintenance really in neighborhoods that need it the most. And so just wanted to to share that. But Mario, I really just want to say thank you so much for your leadership and all our amazing park staff for the work that they do with our families, our youth, and our seniors. Really looking forward to the new numbers for the deferred maintenance. I'm guessing it's going to be much higher, right? But that also means that this council has a responsibility to make sure that we can address those needs. So again, thank you so much, and really looking forward to future conversation on on our on our parks budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Mario, I too want to talk about deferred maintenance, but we'll wait to get that number back. I I do remember asking originally for the number a few months back, and so I know it's a moving target, but we all are interested in seeing what we can do in order to bring that number down and also improve our parks and other amenities by by dealing with the deferred maintenance. But I want to go on to another subject just for a second. I heard you say that forty percent of employees that you are hiring are under the age of twenty-four, and I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
That is correct, Councilmember. I asked staff to do a quick query coming into this presentation, just to take a look at that, and you know, as of a few days ago, when we were preparing this presentation, that was the count, you know, of our employee, active employees, forty percent are under the age of twenty-four.
Now, when you when you think about the safety support teams and the admin, the youth division, the community enrichment division, the Parks and Maintenance Division, all the different divisions that are under your jurisdiction, that's just incredible leadership. You know, and I and I just want to thank you and all of your, everyone who's working with you on bringing that kind of strategy and initiative to the city of Sacramento. I think it's a model that other cities would want to look at and want to try to duplicate as well, because those same employees that you're hiring now under the age of twenty-four end up becoming long-term retirees from the city of Sacramento, working in different departments, starting a career here. And I look at the landscape and learning job that you have out right now, where you're hiring twelve summer crew leaders at an incredible dollar amount of eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents per hour. And so it just lets me know that you are committed to making sure you bring in young people having different experiences, different positions, and I just want to acknowledge that because that that's something, that's that's a best practice. And it's intentional, and you are doing it intentionally, and you're making our city better because of it. So I want to acknowledge that, and just the great job that you guys are doing with everything that you're doing. I mentioned the departments earlier, but I'm just really pleased to see how you're managing these departments and making them better. So, good job. Keep doing what you're doing. I had the opportunity to speak to one of the landscape and learning crews. I just happened to be driving down Twenty-Fourth and Meadowview, and I saw them over in the park, and I went over and spent twenty-five minutes with them, not telling them that I was a city council member. And at the end, I told them that I was, and they asked me would I come back. And I think it's important to get every city council member in front of these young people so that they can see that one day, maybe they can sit in this seat as well. Have a job with the city of Sacramento, maybe sit in this seat and lead this great city that we love. So thank you for everything you're doing, Mario, and your team.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Councilmember Harris again?
Yeah, just a brief comment, Mayor. You know, the deferred maintenance for parks has been an issue ever since I've been on the council, and the number has grown or not budged. I'd like to point out that I suggest we spend three million dollars of mid-year funds to bolster the account for deferred maintenance, but the council chose to spend in other areas. It's it's a persistent problem. At some point, I feel it's imperative that this council addresses it. So I appreciate Councilmember Vang's suggestion.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up on this question of deferred maintenance? Do we have a qual- any form of a quality index for our parks and fields that measures, like I said, the quality, I mean, potholes, gopher holes, lack of, lack of grass, all of it, right? Compared to what the standard should be or is around the country, any way to measure that neighborhood by neighborhood, park by park?
Thank, thank you for the question, Mayor. We we don't have a comprehensive quality index, but we are working on an evaluation tool where we're looking at parks that have sports fields, and we are applying various metrics, the overall condition of the parks, the amenities that are in those parks, the location of the parks. Is it in a low-income neighborhood or a high-youth density neighborhood? And we're working with IT to develop this tool to come up with a ranking of those parks in terms of using the equity lens and using those metrics, so they can help guide us towards where we we can, we can dedicate our our limited resources.
Can you send me some information on that, please, whatever you have in writing?
Absolutely. We have a draft available that we can share.
I'd like you to, if you get that to my office right away, please. But there's never been an evaluation of the quality of our parks and and what, I I know that there's a number, right, for backlog in terms of deferred maintenance? Has that been correlated at all with an evaluation of our parks?
We have project lists. We have project lists across across the board. We have various project lists that that we that we work off of. But in terms of an index, not not anything quite like that, like a ranking.
Okay, and just to reiterate, I know it's come up a couple of times, I remember last week before that. Sometime before this budget ends and hopefully sooner, given the proximity of the summer. We're going to get some report back on on the on the staff's direction or recommendations on the five million. As well as any other grants or resources that are out there for how we. How we intend to go forward with that money.
Mayor, I'm going to jump in for a second. Yes, the five million dollars set aside for workforce, we will have a presentation. Can't remember the date on it, Mario, or or Mike Jass was on here. But as far as the summer programming, we will have something in place come July one, working with YPC. Violence prevention and the police department. We just need to figure out how we align the CBOs to make that happen.
No, and I I know that there's a lot of good and hard work going on there and appreciate. I just think at some point to come to the council so that the public can, we can. Hear it and understand how the pieces fit together is I would.
Yeah, I I think in part because we have to move quickly in order to have these things stood up. The the summer programming, that will probably be a report back to the council. Certainly, the five the five million dollars in workforce will absolutely be discussed in great detail in front of the council.
That's fine. I don't want you to delay on the summer at all, worrying about agendas. But yes, a a report back or something where we. Understand where you're going, that that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Shneer.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Just just a couple of quick comments. And Mario, thank you for your work and and for really. Doing as much with very little as anyone in the city. Would love to to get more funding into the department, as you know. Couple of things, though. One is, I want to go back to the question the mayor asked around. Excuse me, what we're spending on youth services? And I I know that Emily Colson in finance is doing some work on that to try to establish a baseline. There's lots of questions. How do you count a park? You know, what percentage do you use? When you're counting for youth services versus other things, and you can you can take that question and really expand it to a lot of different types of services. But I hope through the work that Emily is doing, we'll have a number that we can all agree on, because I think it's important to have a baseline. So we know, you know, as we do. Increases across the board or to other departments, how that affects. The youth youth division and eight point eight million dollars is is not a whole lot of money as as we know. But again, they do a tremendous amount. It would be great, Mario, also to think about the L and L work that you're doing. And think about how how do we really move those pathways forward? Both into city jobs, but also, you know, potentially working with Los Rios or other agencies. It's it's great experience for these young people. I'm not sure where, how far the pathway extends, and and maybe we could have a discussion about that at some time as well. We want these young people, where possible, to become city workers. And and really take care of our city, and and how do we facilitate that in a in a good way? The the other comment I had and and I want to give credit to Councilmember Vice Mayor Ashby. Did a great job on the Natomas Aquatic Center. It looks beautiful, and I know it's getting used, right? The question that I have is, you know, can we, at the end of the summer, get a report back on the usage? By young people outside of Natomas, you know, that's something that we discussed. Early on, I know you have some programs that you're trying to put in place around free days and things like that. I I don't know how. We measure how effective that is. I believe you look at zip codes for people when they're coming to the aquatic center. But if we could put a pin in a date, you know, prior to school starting. After the summer and really look at usage and see if we've been successful at all with the programs and and bring that back as a discussion item as well. That would be great.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shneer. Okay, thank you again. There's no question, you you lead really well and your team really. Leads with with passion, and thank you for that. Think a lot of us would want to want to find ways to get you even more so that you can do, so that you can do even more. And that's that's what budgets are about, not just now, but over time to be continued to be discussed. So thank you, Mario.
Here, if I can, one more item really quickly. I I don't. And my apologies, and Mario, where does the ride free RT money run through? That's not YPC, correct?
Does not run through YPC. It runs through Public Works, I believe.
Okay, so I I'll reserve that comment until we get to Public Works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shneer, there is not a separate presentation from Public Works, so this would be an appropriate time to go ahead and make that comment.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Milstein. I appreciate that. So. A- as you all know, and and this is a annual discussion, we put a million dollars into the Ride Free RT program over a number of years. The program has been incredibly successful and become a national model. Last year, because of COVID, they only spent about two seven hundred and fifty thousand, and what staff did this year. Was take last year's number and move it forward. So there's seven hundred and fifty thousand in the budget rather than a million dollars. What's happened with RT is when you look at the data. Student ridership has gone way beyond adult ridership and is back to pre-COVID levels, if not beyond that. So we know that young people are taking advantage, young people and their families. Are taking advantage of this program, but we are short on that. And I I know that. Our bottom line is about one point seven million and seen that. But I'd like to see if the Budget and Audit Committee could figure out a way to get us at least back to where we should be in the commitment that we've made. To RT and the community about it, which would be the million dollars. Or some portion of that, looking at the future. So again, I know our budget is really tight. I don't have any other. Ask for dollars, but that's one place that I think if we can make the program whole, based on the commitment we've made, I think. I wouldn't call it an oversight by staff, but it was just taking the the level of dollars from last year and moving it forward when we were in COVID. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, got to try to find a way. All right, members, let's move then on to the last item for the afternoon session, and that's the Measure U Committee Advisory Committee's recommendations regarding. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three priorities. And we have Ms. Rogani here, and I know we have the leadership of the Measure. You committee as well, I assume Dr. Kofer is here. I don't see her on. Line here. There she is. Okay, Dr. Kofer. Hi, who's going to start us out?
I am going to start you today, Mayor.
Good.
And if there are other members of the Measure U Committee, I know there were some when we came to budget and audit who weren't promoted. And had some comments, and I wasn't able to monitor that. So if the clerk could make sure that any other members of the committee are promoted, if they have. Additional comments to make.
Mrs. Maribea Sala has her.
Perfect, yeah.
Please, please go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Flojean Kofer, and I'm the Chair of the Measure U Community Advisory Committee. And I have the honor of being able to present to you our recommendations for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. First and foremost, we want to, again, thank you for this opportunity to be able to present to you our recommendations, and I also want to just thank the members of our committee, both past and present. For their really diligent work and thoughtful work in providing their own lived experience, as well as their professional expertise, and helping to craft these recommendations. And so as we go through them, what we've decided to do this year is really focus on two particular things that the committee wants to have funded. With some specific dollar amounts, and then also lifting up some of the priorities and some of the things that we'd like to see included in the finalized budget. So first and foremost, we wanted to touch on metrics. We really appreciate the city, including metrics in the budget. However, we are most looking forward to the city publishing the dashboard that was promised in last year's budget on pages forty one to forty three. We again want to reiterate that the important, there's a significant importance to systematically tracking our performance metrics. Because that describes our outcomes, right? How well our programs are functioning and their human impact. And right now, some of the performance metrics are really just looking at inputs and outputs of city operations. And we also want to reiterate a previous recommendation to conduct a neighborhood analysis of equity investments. We also think it would be helpful to have a spending database for the city, and this would provide a mechanism to to have a better idea of the investments by neighborhood, by income, by race ethnicity. And language spoken to develop geographic and demographic specific plans for future spending. And given the council's commitment to racial equity and the new council that is or the new committee that's being formed, we really wanted to make sure that we lifted up that recommendation as something that will bolster. Citywide efforts in this regard. Additionally, with the change in the Measure U budget this year, the Department of Community Response is funded by Measure U. And the department was established in part to shift emergency response for nine one one calls related to homelessness and mental health away from the police department to a workforce train. To provide appropriate response and navigation to wraparound services. And in November, this committee requested data on nine one one calls for service from the council to help guide our recommendations for the budget. And we unfortunately were not provided the data we requested. So as a first step to using metrics to guide budgetary and programmatic decision making, we're requesting that the council direct staff to provide the data our committee requested. And to share with us how many calls are being transferred from the police department to the Department of Community Response, so that appropriate budgetary adjustments can be made accordingly. Next, we have participatory budgeting. We are recommending this year that five point five million dollars in additional funding for community identified projects. Be allocated from the budget with at least five hundred thousand dollars additional for consultants, outreach activities, and evaluation. As a reminder, starting in February twenty twenty, the committee requested five million dollars for participatory budgeting. And that figure was developed with an understanding that the city of Vallejo, a city with less than twenty five percent of the population of Sacramento. Made an investment of one million dollars or eight dollars and twenty four cents per resident. And however, when we learned that Seattle, a city about fifty percent larger in population size than Sacramento, made an investment of thirty million dollars or forty one point. Forty one dollars and thirty nine cent per resident for participatory budgeting, we increased our request to fifteen million dollars in that first year. So we were certainly pleased that the council approved one million dollars for the pilot and two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for implementation costs. In last year's budget to launch the pilot in two neighborhoods in Sacramento. And the current pilot is in the idea collection phase and has an evaluation plan and performance metrics that will be provided to the council at the conclusion. And so while the evaluation data are not yet available because of the stage of the project, some of the initial experiential data indicate that a future round of the project would benefit from additional funding to pay for outreach and community engagement activities. As well as a larger pot of money for project implementation. Unfortunately, five hundred thousand dollars per region limits the types of projects that can be funded in a multi neighborhood area. Furthermore, given the initial interest and enthusiasm about the initiative and the mayor's suggestion that this process could be applied more broadly to the entire budget. We're requesting the council to increase their investment and commitment for an additional year. Next, we can move to small business support, and here is our second recommendation for a specific amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. And this will be for facade improvement grants to allow businesses and property owners to apply for funds to fix vandalized windows and doors that are often destroyed after hours. During a business burglary. And one of our suggestions is to ensure access. Is to use a ranking system that would prioritize the geographic areas where there's been historical lack of public investment. To ensure that this type of programming would reach across the city and ensure the areas that don't have P bids have access to the funding. Next, we move to affordable housing. Here, we recommend that the funding be spent on direct financial investments to drive state and federal matched dollars for affordable housing and homelessness prevention. By supporting Sacramento residents in maintaining housing through mortgage and rental assistance and providing additional gap funding for new affordable housing developments. We further recommend allocating Measure U funds to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that can be used for purposes that include home repair. And waived code enforcement fees for elderly or low income homeowners, first time home buyers programs, homeless prevention programs, and livable wage jobs. Enterprise efforts to support housing affordability for historically underserved neighborhoods. We called out the examples of Glen Elder, Garden Land, Del Paso Heights, and Meadowview. Next, we move to homelessness, and here we recommended that we continue to allocate Measure U funds for direct programs and services. Responsible for moving individuals and families into more stable environments, addressing barriers, and moving people from homelessness to housing. We reiterated our recommendation from the midyear letter last year that funding be spent to expand service provision beyond women and children under fourteen. To include other children, people of other genders, and veterans. We also wanted to add to the allocation to respite centers to expand the availability of shelter for inclement weather and for safe ground sites. And in addition, we wanted to directly fund the development of permanent supportive housing, including through Project Home Key and transitional housing. Because we believe that's critical to the success of the city's efforts to to address homelessness. And we also think that Measure U funds should be directed to support these important efforts. Next, for senior services, we wanted to call it that we have a growing elderly population in Sacramento with unique needs that the city should identify and support. And so we recommend that funding be spent to expand the service hours, geographic availability, and language access to services such as the Heart Senior Center. The Triple R Program, the Fifty Plus Wellness Program, the Carrying Neighborhoods Program, the Stanford Settlement, Tech Connections, and the Information and Assistance Program. With youth, we are we are very pleased that funds from Measure U have been invested in youth. And the committee recommends that the council continue to prioritize investing in programs and services for youth, especially those from historically underserved communities. Provided by the city and in partnership with community-based organizations to ensure community well-being. And we recommended that funding be spent to expand programming for youth in K to twelve, youth under twenty six, culturally relevant services for native and mom youth. As well as youth from refugee families and to support a protected and earmarked city fund for children and youth. Expanding on the recommendation above for for performance metrics. The spending database for the city should include a list of organizations that have received funding from the youth development grant program. And the zip codes of the youth served to understand and assure that Measure U funds are being used to serve the communities with demonstrated need and to make recommendations to fill future gaps. For community investment, we want to emphasize the importance of community centers and serving a variety of neighborhoods and demographics. And encourage the council to consider increasing investments in their services and operations. And again, we want to reiterate a previous recommendation to include in the youth line item investments that are specific to youth. Sometimes investments which we support are and are important parts of the city infrastructure, but are best categorized as community investments are sometimes lumped into the youth programming. Which then minimizes the impact of our actually funded programs for youth, and some examples of that may include aquatics and the Sacramento Zoo. Next, we move to violence prevention, and the committee recommends providing additional funding for community-based violence prevention programs. That operate externally to the police department and span and range from primary prevention at for at risk youth and adults. To intervention and anti-recidivism services for system impacted youth and adults. The committee further suggests that the funds be provided to existing partners with expertise and a proven track record in providing these services. As well as offering some capacity building funding to burgeoning organizations to expand the service provision in Sacramento. And furthermore, we recommend using collecting program utilization data by age and zip code to help guide our future investments. Next, our youth job skill development. This is our high wage job promotion. So the committee actually focused our attention on bolstering an existing program, Thousand Strong. Currently, the program is. It program participation is low, and it's also incredibly costly to employers. And so we recommended that the city partner with an organization that has a proven track record of success with youth job development. And by doing so, this could really turn this into a meaningful and effective job training program for youth. Next, for arts and creative edge, this was a new line items for the Measure U Committee this year, and we recommend that Measure U investments in this category be focused on youth in traditionally underserved communities. And next up, the library. The committee again wants to emphasize the importance of the services provided by libraries. One of the few public spaces that do not require a fee for entry or require patrons to purchase goods or services as a condition of use. And while the committee recognizes that libraries are governed by a joint powers agreement involving entities outside of the city. Given that libraries were specifically named in the Measure U ballot, we recommend increasing the investment in libraries. And that the voting members of the JPA advocate for applying these funds to respond to the community needs and use patterns. Increased funding might be spent to expand services such as operating hours, the print and online catalog, internet access, and other specialized programming. And lastly, in the midyear twenty one twenty two recommendations, the committee recommended that the city brand Measure U investments. By directing staff to develop a logo, identify sign placement, and assess printing and installation costs. And we are incredibly pleased that the city adopted our recommendations to develop a logo as well as a communications plan that will be utilized by all. as well as a communications plan that will be utilized by all departments receiving Measure U funds. And so we're incredibly grateful for this opportunity to be able to provide our recommendations and for the opportunity to serve our community in this important endeavor. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our recommendations and our budget priorities.
All right, you know, first I just want to say thank you to you and the committee for really spending so much time, effort and passion on on moving the city in the in a very important set of directions here. And, you know, I even noticed the reports have changed a little bit from the the committee over time, right? And maybe there is some little more trust being built, a little more progress seen while you the committee rightfully continues to push. And that's, that's, I think, healthy. I really do think that it is healthy and all your recommendations with the resources, right? I think over time, we're trying to get there on as many fronts as possible. The three things I wanted to kind of touch on real quickly. One is is to make sure that we do get a report back on the performance metric issue, which your letter raised because that over time should really be determinative, right? Of where we of where we put additional resources based upon what is proving to be successful and what may be and what may be less successful. The other thing that I had asked for is, and I know the staff is working on this, is just an update from that one hundred nineteen million dollar number, which was impressive. The number that was the cumulative amount the city council between Measure U and the general fund has invested in in the community writ large in a number of these categories since the passage of the second half of Measure U in November of two thousand eighteen. Above the amount was that was being spent before that was one hundred nineteen million. I'd like to see that updated. And then finally, on participatory budgeting, we don't yet have the first million dollars out the door. And I know the the community is building that project, but I just want to state and restate what I've said all along. I believe that the elected representatives in the city council ultimately have to have the final decision on the expenditure, at least of large amounts of public dollars. I just think that's the essence of representative government. I think the entire budget should be participatory budgeting. And I know that's going to freak out, you know, maybe freak out some who say, well, what do you mean? I'm not, I'm saying that what you are designing for a million dollars, as long as the council has the final say on on how to spend the taxpayer's money, what you're building in terms of outreach and process and engagement and inclusion to me should be the way we do budget outreach every budget year for the entire budget. So I'm anxious to see not only what the recommendations are for the million dollars, but the process that you create and how many people get engaged and what their and what their experience is in terms of the responsiveness of the city staff, the city council, the mayor's office, all of us here. Because that to me is every bit is important because if the process is right and there's genuine engagement and people feel that their voices are being heard, even if it isn't just an up or down vote or something on the set of recommendations, then more of the budget by definition should be participatory. And that's what I would like to, that's what how I would like to see this evolve over the course of time. Councilmember Valenzuela?
If I could bear, I see Mariah Sala, who's a committee member, has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I. Go go ahead. If there's another member of the committee, I just don't see that. I just don't see the hand up.
I've attempted to promote Ms. Sala many times. I've just unmuted her. Ms. Sala, would you like to speak? Ms. Sala?
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And I I didn't join as a panelist because I didn't feel there was much that I could add to what Chair Cofer has already said. She she's done an outstanding job of representing the wishes of the Measure U committee and our extensive discussion and dialogue of what we would like to see in as you debate your the budget, what we want you to make as a priority. And so I'm just here to support what's what has been presented to you. We had extensive discussion about highlighting and making priorities each of those line items that you've that the city manager's office has already proposed to you, but making priorities for the things that Chair Cofer has already mentioned. We feel that it would be, and we change, you're right, we did change our letter because we feel that the money's there. We just want you to prioritize how that money is spent and specifically in those areas that have been highlighted. And I want to also just support and emphasize the importance of matrix and being able to measure the success of each program, not only the success of the programs, but where the funding is going because that's a concern to many of us. And and I I'm the Measure U representative for District Three and I'm also the president of Gardenland Neighborhood Association. And I feel that Gardenland just being one community that probably gets overlooked. I know there are many other neighborhoods that experience the same. So I think the matrix and those recommendations that Chair Cofer made is is essential. And lastly, in regards to participatory budgeting, I I was able to listen in on a community meeting where where they were asking for what would you do if you had five hundred thousand dollars? And it was exciting to see community members that typically aren't engaged giving ideas. And sometimes there were simple ideas. They were just like, you know, we want more picnic tables in the park. We want the bathrooms to be open. It was, they weren't exaggerated or unrealistic ask, but they were excited about being asked. And I thought that was, that's outstanding and a good process to for the community feel like they can say something. Hi, I would like this and that they'll be listened to. So that's all I have to say. And thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
And thank you. Do we have any other public test? Do we have public testimony, I should ask? Madam Clerk?
It's Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Do we have public testimony?
We do have one hand raised, Mr. Davis.
Yes, I would like to say that anytime that I see Measure U as a person who thought the mayor did a wonderful job promoting Measure U, I attended a lot of meetings in what Measure U should should do for a neighborhood like Del Paso Heights. And so I would like to see Measure U monies help this situation in Del Paso Heights. I had heard Mr. Lowly mention something about it. I wanted to set the record straight. He's done a wonderful job helping the drum line and so has Vice Mayor. Actually, I found out. So I don't know if it was Measure U monies or however they did that. But there's ARPA funding available. There's YPSI monies available and they have to leave in June. So the lady, Dr. Cofer, she did a wonderful presentation. That's the graphs I like to see in surveys. And then the mayor came back with performance metrics. See, there you have to be held accountable with the taxpayers' money and you shouldn't have to be told that. So outstanding job, Mr. Lowly and Vice Mayor, but we want to get them there. It's simple math. I learned that in elementary school. If you need sixty and you only have thirty, you're minus thirty. That's integers. Back in the seventies, I learned math. And we didn't have the internet and Google and Facebook and all of that. You had to really use your mind. So let's get this done. But outstanding job, Mayor, with getting Measure U across the finish line because you would have a huge deficit without it. True leadership. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no additional speakers.
Madam Clerk, Mayor had to step away. I'll take over here. Let me bring this back to the council here. I believe Councilmember Valenzuela was up first and then Councilmember Van, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Dr. Cofer and the entire Measure U committee. I never forget that you all do this as volunteers as so many of our committee and commissions do. So just want to thank you for all of the time that you spend meeting with us and meeting with each other and doing that outreach to the committee to the community for participatory budgeting. It's exciting to see that start to roll out in the communities. I do want to talk a little bit about this realignment of funds because something I'd love to see us do, maybe before we approve the final budget, which includes the Measure U chart, is to look at prior year spending for Measure U so that we could see trends. Because I actually had to go back to last year's archive to see the chart of where the money was moved on page twenty five. And so I think it would be super helpful if we put all of that into one chart because I do find it really difficult because we made two changes after last year's budget. One was we shifted money between Measure U and the general fund to better align with the priorities of the Measure U committee. So budgets didn't change, but money got moved. And then the way we report the money in our budget documents changed. So when you looked at the department budget before and you measure you functions like general fund, so I assumed it was included in the general fund numbers by department, but it wasn't. It was included as a labor and supply offset. It was treated like a special fund. So when you saw this credit of forty million dollars in the police budget, for example, you know, that was coming from Measure U, but it wasn't articulated as such. So I like the changes that we're making, but I think we need to make a couple more changes just to make sure that the Measure U spending, it's clear what happened. Because I know I had a lot of questions last Tuesday about how these numbers change. And I just want to thank Laney and Emily and Martha and Natalie for taking time on Friday to walk me through what happened. And and I think we could do a little bit to make the prior year spending of Measure U more clear and especially that realignment that happened between when we adopted the budget in June and today so that the public can understand how that change happened and see some of the priorities that have shifted for the Measure U funding. I have a question for the city manager on this point as well because I was looking at the resolution, the draft resolution that was in the proposed budget we got a few weeks ago. And point one point twelve says that we're authorizing you to continue realignment of the Measure U money in two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three and on a go forward basis. And so I guess I want to know, is that sort of shifting of money between Measure U and general fund going to continue to happen? I assume that was a one time sort of move, but is that something that you're imagining will continue to move forward? Or can you explain why that authority is in the proposed resolution?
I think some of the changes we have have a longer tail on it. And maybe I can have Laney and or Emily explain that piece of it too. Because there are some things that were not clean with the fiscal year. And so I think we had to have that authority to make, continue to make that shift all the way through. And your first question, I think the mayor asked earlier about the updating of the one hundred nineteen million. I think that aligns with what you're asking for. So Laney, you want to jump on here or I don't see Emily?
We're happy to. Laney Millstein, Assistant City Manager. On the first question, I think what we can do, and I've been chatting with Martha and Emily, is create a chart for all of the departments that gives a little more historical with that Measure U and comparing apples to apples. And we can bring that back to budget not it on the thirty first. The the, so your second question was about.
Move forward authority. So when I looked in the draft resolution for this budget, it's included.
It was a hugely heavy lift to do that between proposed and approved. And what we wanted to make sure is if there was a straggler that we discovered that should have been categorized within those five or six categories. And we want to make that adjustment to make sure it's categorized that we have the authority to do that. I wouldn't expect that that would be included in the twenty three twenty four budget resolution because we should be pretty much done with it after this cycle. We just wanted that cleanup authority to be there for one more year.
Okay, so I guess I would be more comfortable if it was worded for one more year and maybe instead of the go forward basis. And and maybe we could just make that alteration during the budget because I I think it's important that the budget deliberations kind of reflect to the degree they can all of the changes we anticipate if possible for the next year. So would love to see that maybe articulated, whatever that trailer thing issue is, so that we kind of know what changes are coming.
Yeah, should not be a problem.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Guerra. I just wanted to take this moment, one, to say thank you, Dr. Flo, for your presentation and just for all your great leadership on the Measure U committee. Also want to give a shout out to my commissioner, Tracy Thomas, as well, and all of the commissioner for spending their time really on this committee to ensure that the city is doing what we committed ourselves to in terms of the Measure U dollars. And then I also want to thank city staff because I know that we have a Measure U committee, but nothing can get done without a city person actually staffing the Measure U committee. So I want to give a shout out to Ash and thank him for his hard work on really supporting the Measure U committee as well. And and then lastly, just if the committee is watching this right now, I just want you to all know that, you know, your time is of value and that I appreciate you. And I want to say thank you for always pushing the envelope like the mayor mentioned and that, you know, you are truly holding us accountable to ensure that we spend Measure U dollars in a way that truly reflects the need of the community. I just had just a comment and one question and wanted to ask maybe Howard, if you could answer this or whoever was working on the performance dash board, but wanted to know what is the status on that, on the performance dashboard? Like, I do believe having a way to to track performance metrics that really describe the outcomes and impact is really critical. And this was an ask of the Measure U committee and wanted to know if we have a timeline on that. I know the mayor also echoed that as well. I wanted to know what is the timeline on the performance dashboard?
Well, so so it's multifaceted. Right now in the budget book, Dr. Cofer is correct. We have probably around eighty to ninety measures in there that have been in there for several years in the budget book that carry over. One of the things that's really important is that we're consistent in collecting this data. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to compare year over year. Just for context, we hired a performance manager a couple of years back and over the course of the pandemic, we pulled them off completely. You know, Daniel Sanchez, who's no longer here, was responsible for doling out CRF in conjunction with economic development folks. And so that was put on on ice for a little bit, on hiatus. We've been collecting well over a thousand measures. Some of them are more like workload measures as opposed to outcomes. What we've distilled thus far into the budget book really aligns with some of the outcomes, maybe not in the way that the Measure U committee wants to see them. But I think it's very critical that we have to have a discussion about aligning those outcome measures with the priorities of this council, which leads us back to a comment I made last week is that we need to make sure that we have those priorities set so that we could set those performance metrics and outcomes to align with those because otherwise it will be, you know, all over the board here. So timing wise, I mean, we have the measures. We have probably downloaded down back down to like five hundred. But I really am wanting to have the discussion with the council on priority setting prior to releasing those publicly and putting those dashboards out there. Because I think last thing I want to do is put out some measures that will change. It will confuse folks and it will just, you know, it'll just be confusing.
Yeah, no, thanks. Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate that. And I I do think, I mean, it does merit a conversation, a larger conversation around priorities. I think because we do need to have an external dashboard so that the community can see the metrics, but that does come back to the council to make sure that we are all on the same page. I don't know when that conversation is happening, but we definitely want, I think we need to make sure we we calendar that in to have a larger conversation about that. I see that Dr. Flo's hand is up right now as well. So she may have a comment on that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yes, first of all, Councilmember Van and City Manager, thank you so much for lifting up the performance metrics and the need for the priorities. That's actually one of the recommendations. About eighteen months ago, I convened the chairs and vice chairs for most of the city's boards, committees and commissions. And we actually sent over a recommendation to the city clerk for some things that we were recommending more broadly from all of the committees and commissions and 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 boards. And one of them was to have a joint meeting with the council each year where we talked about priorities because actually in the founding documents for Measure U, it says that we are tasked with helping you to find ways to be able to uplift your priorities. And without having any, it's very difficult. And I'm sure the city manager's office finds it very difficult to develop a budget without articulated priorities and is often using last year's budget to develop the next year's budget, which basically just benchmarks us to whatever we did the previous year without a thoughtful and inclusive process around what exactly are we prioritizing? So our committee has actually had that conversation and has considered sending over a separate communication about priorities and a follow up request for the council to actually do that so that we are aware of what the city's priorities are and then we can think about how we spend money. The other piece that I wanted to lift up was Councilmember Valenzuela's recommendation about having previous year dollars. That was something that the committee actually asked of staff. That was something that the committee actually asked of staff because it, when we are looking to see, we, we often get the new budget and it has five years projected into the future, which is helpful, but we know certainly that's going to change based on what happens during the budget process. But what would be more helpful would be actually to be able to see what was spent five years in the past. Because we know sometimes those numbers go up and down, and it's helpful for the committee to be able to think about where we spent dollars in the past. More so, I, I would actually argue than, you know, maybe we do just a couple of years in the future, but really focus on having those four or five years in the past as a way to be able to help us understand what, where we have spent dollars before, so we can think about future investments and future needs.
Thank you, Chair Kofor. I see Councilmember Valenzuela's hand still up. Councilmember Valenzuela?
I raised it again. Sorry, Mayor Protem, but I wanted to chime in because when you got into performance measures, it was like, oh, because that's actually how I first met our city manager, like, gosh, like seven years ago, when I was organizing in Jay's district, actually, in the neighborhoods. And we were like, we just want to know. And so there's these really great models in other cities that cover basic things like 3-1-1 response time, right? You know, average, just basic measures like deferred maintenance, which we talked about before, that could be a metric in there. How are we doing on these things so that community members get sort of baseline data that help them understand where money is spent and then to greet, to the degree we can. Because I find sometimes citywide metrics to be, to, to really mask, to use what Laney used last week, to really mask some of the, maybe discrepancies within the city. And so, you know, maybe the average response time for fire is five minutes. But if it's 20 minutes in one neighborhood, and if it's two minutes in another neighborhood, because this neighborhood's just getting way more calls, that would help inform our budgeting a little bit better if we're like, gosh, like that neighborhood needs more resources because they're not getting the same level of service maybe that another neighborhood is getting. I don't know to the degree that's possible, but that's the sort of dream we had way back when, when we first started approaching the city to talk about, like, we want more data about where the money is going and sort of what the impact is beyond just gross department numbers. But I do also hear what you're saying in terms of priorities, because I think that's like a separate, like, this is the vision of a strategic plan. And when the mayor was first elected, I was like, I want us to have a strategic plan as a city because there's base functions that just have to continue no matter what. But then what are those goals? What are those changes we're trying to make as a council? And how do we sort of battle that out every year so that we're allocating resources in some sort of strategic manner? Unless it's sort of a hodgepodge, you know, project or discreet priority way that changes year to year. So I definitely want to say that I think it's both. And so I don't want to get that lost in both things, because, I mean, there's a city, was it Boston, City Score? I can't remember which one I sent you way back when.
It was Boston. It was City of Austin. It was San Diego.
They actually had a real time, it was like daily, weekly, monthly, yearly, like averages of like, like code, like code enforcement response times, like different things that I was like, this is way cool. I don't know if that's possible, and I would not put that on our poor IT department who's been through enough over the last two years. But do you want to think that, like, even if it was annually during our budget, just to be able to give a little bit more nuanced data before we enter into these conversations, just like we're doing the citywide survey now before we enter into the conversations? So we have that going in. So I just wanted to add that.
I think it's a, it, it's really a function of resources. When some of the cities that you and I have discussed in the past, and more recently that we've looked at, they have whole departments to do performance metrics. We have a department of one with support from the IT department. And so even pulling together these thousand measures and having a mechanism to track them consistently so we can compare year over year is a very heavy lift. And as I mentioned, we took a two and a half year hiatus just focusing on the pandemic. But I, I think this, this does warrant a conversation as part of the priority setting. If this is something that rises to that level, we need to make an investment in that function in our city. And, you know, it's not just hardware, software. That, that's the, that's the presentation of the data. The collection, consistent collection, definition across all, you know, programs and services, that's going to be key, and that's, that's where we want to focus our time and effort.
Yeah, well, and this could be the sort of thing that like would be a great candidate for like a one-time grant, right? Like, maybe we could be, you know, approaching other funders to say, hey, we want to improve civic engagement and transparency. So I think I'd love to be more active in brainstorming that with you all just because I think there's a lot of cool, maybe opportunities that we're missing that we could get as we approach our state partners for funding in the budget every year, right? I mean, like, maybe there's some good one-time funding we could seek out to really give us the infusion to do this in a way that both serves the city departments and the city team to be able to report out to the community and helps us in our budgeting and decision-making in the community, just to know where our money's going.
Agreed. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Harris? You're on mute, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, Mr. City Manager, I would posit that spending on performance metrics is the most important spending we could do at this juncture. Every time we get to budget and mid-year, we do one-off spending shoot-from-the-hip projects that are usually pet projects of council members. They all have validity. They all have some efficacy. But we have never had substantial analysis of what we get for the money we spend. You know, I, I lament the loss of Daniel Sanchez. I think we need a performance metrics department. And quite frankly, you know, we do make a lot of decisions that are not, I think, fully informed because we don't have the data before us. When it comes to priority setting, and, and when we have a discussion about this, this will be at the top of my list, and parks maintenance will probably be second. But you, you know, this is, this is absolutely essential. We, we, we just kind of go along and get along, and, you know, we do reasonably well as a city. But there are so many priorities that get neglected, like public works, like PCI, like parks maintenance, and, and even funding CPOs. Are we getting a good bang for our buck? We just don't have the information to know where the efficacy truly is. And because our budgets are so tight year over year, because we have red ink in that years, we really have to be very efficient about that, how we spend every single penny. I think the only way we can get there is with truly well-developed performance metrics across the board. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Appreciate it. So I want to thank both the Chair Kofor for a great presentation at budget and audit, and thanks for City Manager Chan for making sure that we could put this, find us an opportunity to put this on the council agenda prior to the main budget consideration with ample time for the council to review this. With that, Madam Clerk, I believe that that's, do we have any members of the public already, Madam Clerk? We already went to public comment, correct?
No, we do have public comment for matters not on the agenda.
Okay, with that, this is a receive and file. Thank you very much, Chair Kofor. Let's go first to, let's go to public comment first, and then we'll go to council comments. I do want to acknowledge that our, our Vice Mayor has, has joined us as well. Madam Clerk?
First speaker is Shira Lane.
Hi, my name is Shira Lane, CEO and founder of H3916 and of Cycle Pop. I apologize I missed last week's meeting, was traveling abroad, but really wanted to speak on the art and culture budget. Mayor, council, and all the city staff have not been thanked nearly enough for the amazing support and funding that has never been seen before in Sacramento or any other city in the nation for that matter, and how it made all the difference to our creative community here in Sacramento. I have stories on stories on stories on how this funding saved people's lives. With the additional 10 million from ARPA mid-year, it is totally understandable why in the 2223 budget, the 2.6 million augmentation request was not included. By 2324, these extra federal dollars will be depleted, and then the need for additional funding will be crucial, but it won't be guaranteed through the augmentation request process. The way the funding works now hampers with the ability for anyone, Office of Arts and Culture and the grantees, to do any serious multi-year planning, which is a huge key to achieving greater sustainability and growing capacity. My question for council is, how can all the hard work that's been invested so far be sustained for growth? Would it be possible next year to increase the base, the base budget slightly to include the yearly augmentation request within the base budget? Pretty please consider for next year, making arts and culture part of the city budget. So collaboratively, we can rely and build upon the great work this city has already done for the creative community. Thank you so much for listening and hopefully considering this as an option for next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis?
Yes, I, I would, yes, I would like, I hope that I heard Vice Mayor was, had returned because I, I wanted to send her a shout out as well. Mr. Lowly definitely got his shout out today from me. But I also found out through my research with the director of the Drum Line at Grant High School, he mentioned that Vice Mayor Ashby helped him. So I like to give people credit where it's due, and I wanted to thank both of them. And I also asked the Drum Line Director, are you ready to go in June? They're scheduled to represent Sacramento, specifically Grant High School, somewhere in Washington DC next month. And he said they're 30, $30,000 short. And I said, well, I'll mention it because I know Measure You has it. I know ARPA has it, and I know Yipsey has it. I'm talking about this year's budget, not next year. And $30,000 should not hurt them considering, should not hurt the city considering they're going to represent, they're going to be acknowledged nationally. And if you really care about teenagers and youth, cut the check loose. There's no excuse for them to have to do cake sales and, I mean, come on. You know, I, I saw people, I saw a group get $4 million last month with ARPA funding, and nobody made any noise. I'm the only one asked about that. So cut the check loose from somewhere and let these young people go represent this city in Washington DC. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Matthew Winters is our final speaker.
Yes, hello, City Council and Mayor. My name is Matthew Winters, resident of District Seven. I just wanted to follow up once again in my, I guess, campaign against gasoline leaf blowers and their use within the city. So I had most recently spoken to Dennis Rogers, one of your staff, Councilmember Jennings, and Henry Atkinson about my timeline so far in regards to getting enforcement on the current city code, and then also asking if, if you personally would support an initiative brought before the city council in regards to getting them banned in a timed basis, whether that be 2024, which aligns with the sale ban, 2025, 2026. Dennis Rogers claimed that you would never support that, and I, I just wanted to know why. And, and if, if you can't answer that, that's fine, but I, I do want to remind you that taking no action is an action. These tools do not benefit the impoverished and, and commonly uninsured community that use them. Personally, I'm honorably discharged disabled veteran. I spent 10,000 hours roughly in a, in a closed-off room with server fans running constantly 24/7 and hepatitis in both ears. And, and these, these tools bother me greatly personally. So that, that's one of the reasons why I have been spoken out. And I found that the laws do support some of the more restrictive noise measures and, and, and just have not been enforced. And, and the, the story I keep getting from city council as well as Dennis Rogers is nothing more can be done. If, if I ever said that to one of my superiors in the military, they would, I wouldn't be here right now. You know, we always need to try our best to, to, to support our community, all of our community in beneficial ways that can help us all. These tools do not help us all. They, they, they put us all at risk. So please let me know if you would ever support an outright ban or a vote before the council. Thank you all.
Mayor Protem, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me go to council comments. AB 123 reports, Chief PA Board Commission Appointments. Any comments from the council saying none, Madam Clerk? Any appointments?
I have no appointments to read into the record.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk, and that we're adjourned until our 5:00 PM council meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.